All right, so I'm gonna go ahead and call our November 9th council meeting to order. And I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Mr. Reynolds?
Here.
Mr. Chambers?
Here.
Mr. Mullins?
Here.
Ms. Walden?
Here.
Ms. Schinholster?
Here.
Dr. Lee?
Here.
We do have a quorum present, so at this time if you will stand for the prayer and the pledge. Eteron of Father God, we pause tonight to say thank you. Thank you for this year as far as it has gotten us. We thank you for everyone that you've looked upon and granted the wishes of their hearts and their desires. We thank you for being with the families that have gone through their trials and tribulations, bereavement, sickness. We just thank you, Lord God, because we know that you are God, and we know that you are too wise to make a mistake. So we just glorify you as we come tonight to make decisions to cover us through the rest of this year, to encourage, to facilitate, to make sure that we're doing the right things in the city of Millersville, to push Millersville forward. So as I conclude my prayers always, I ask that you continue to look upon our first responders, our police, our fire, our nurses, doctors, teachers, and alike. As you continue to carry us into this holiday season, may you bring some joy and some light to somebody who will be going through more than their share in this holiday season. This is my prayer, in Jesus's name, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So tonight, y'all just heard me talking about earlier some of the great things that are going on at the Georgia Municipal Association. So I'm gonna ask Ms. Pam Hilton, who's here with us tonight, if she would join me at the podium. Ms. Pam is coming here to present a certificate to me, so I think it'll be crazy for me to talk about myself. I'm not allowed to do it for me.
I can do that for you. As many of you know, the GMA, the Georgia Municipal Association, has a training program for our elected officials. But we actually go a little bit further, and we also offer training and workshops on a variety of topics. And we have just recently prepared a municipal revenue certificate program for staff and for elected officials to take advantage of. And it's five classes, six hours apiece, and we go over all the revenue sources, what, when, why, and how of every revenue source, and give you some tips and good practices to use back at the city. Shay's taken it and has her certificate. But at this time, I would like to recognize the mayor for her accomplishment in taking the municipal revenue certificate and being, thank you for your support of GMA. I applaud elected officials for taking those classes because that means you are really, you want to learn about all the revenue sources, and you want to learn what, how your city can use those revenue sources to better your city. So thank you so much, and I would like to give this to you. And so, if you will take up a picture.
Hey, let me take one, and I'll just send it to you, Pam.
Okay, thank you. Because we'd like to put it on our website. So she has completed the municipal revenue certificate administration program.
All right, I'll do two on three, one, two, three, one, two, three. You told me to put mine on. All right, I'll do two more, three, one, two, three, one, two, three.
Thank you so much.
Oh, B. Hobbs came in, I didn't realize.
Yes, sir, he's checking the background.
Thank you so much. I appreciate everything that you do. And we just recognize elected officials for their efforts in leading their cities, so thank you.
Mr. Griffin, you got that one in, but that's okay. Ms. Pam, I just want to take the opportunity to thank you and the Georgia Municipal Association for this certificate. You and the Georgia Municipal Association are one of our best assets in the cities across the state and have, we have to rely on, and we appreciate what you and GMA do for us each and every day, and all of our elected officials and staff. Ms. Shay ain't gonna say I got bragging rights, but we completed the class together, sharing ideas, so thank you. Thank you for coming, and we'll come back, okay?
We all thank you.
While the mayor's coming back around, I'll just sing some additional praises to GMA. While I was at the conference this last summer in Savannah, I took a municipal finance course and found out that state authorities and municipalities, we don't pay sales tax on things like energy. So in my work with the redevelopment authority, I started calling up Georgia Power and found out that we had about $6,000 worth of credit given to our account for the last three years. So I was able to find six grand for the redevelopment authority by attending a GMA course.
We do that all the time because utility bills is one of those things people don't think about looking for. So we have really saved money for cities a lot of times, but just about one thing. I'll give you another tip, did you, you want the other one? Unclaimed property from the state of Georgia. Go to www.dor.ga.gov and look for your unclaimed properties. Because there is plenty of it out there that you, you're gonna have somebody that's got money out there.
Absolutely.
That's your tip for the day.
That's your tip for the day. I immediately start asking Shay, are we doing this, are we doing this? She said, ma'am, I'm not sure. But thank you so very much for taking out the time to come and be with us and present that to me. It means a lot. This whole board, we try to take in as much training as possible. And as Walter just stated, the Georgia Municipal Association has really beefed up their game. Thank you, Dr. Lee, being a part of the training board, new classes. I had an opportunity to take some new classes this fall, and I think they were spot on with Ruchi Patel and Marcy, I believe that's her name, Marcy. And they were spot on, so if you get an opportunity, take the training that they had just presented this fall. You all look at it, it was really good. All right, you all have received a copy of the October 26, 2021 council meeting minutes. Are there any corrections or discussion? Do I hear a motion to adopt the minutes?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Ms. Schinholster?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
The minutes are adopted as official. We have one public hearing tonight to consider, and that will be ordinance O-2109-13 to amend the land development code to rezone and allow a special use of property located at 2936 Heritage Place to be used as a pet funeral home and crematory. Has this procedure for conducting the hearing to amend the land development code will be presented as follows. Once it has been determined that this public hearing has been properly posted and advertised, the clerk will read the proposed amendment to the land development code. We will hear, we will then hear a report from the planning and zoning director indicating the advisory decision of the planning and zoning commission. Council will first hear from the applicant and anyone who wishes to speak in favor of the amendment. We will then hear from anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the amendment. If anyone speaks in opposition to the amendment, we will then give the applicant an opportunity for rebuttal, but the rebuttal must be limited to the points or issues raised by the opposition. Please make sure that before you speak, that you give your name and address for the record. Has this public hearing been properly posted and advertised?
Yes, ma'am, it has been.
I'll ask the clerk to read the ordinance by caption.
An ordinance amending the ordinance passed and adopted on the 10th day of December 2002, known as the Land Development Code of the city of Millersville, Georgia. Ordinance rezones property from CC to OI and allows a special use for a pet funeral home and crematory. Property is located at 2936 Heritage Place.
I will recognize the zoning administrator for a report to include the advisory decision of the Planning and Zoning Commission, Ms. Mervyn Graham.
This was a unanimous vote to pass at the Planning and Zoning Commission. It will be a pet funeral home with a crematory. There's one already like it on South Wilkinson Street, and it emits no odors, no fumes, and you really don't even know what's running. So it was unanimously passed.
This is up on Heritage Place, right, Ms. Mervyn, that's right up where Marco's and all, in that area right there.
Yes, ma'am.
Is the applicant or anyone else present who would like to speak in favor of the amendment? Please step to the podium and give your name and address.
Hey, my name's Rebecca Edwards, and my address is 6875 Colaparchi Road, and that's in Macon, Georgia. I am here to ask for the rezoning and special permit for Heritage Place. I've been a business owner and office manager of the animal hospital of Millersville since 2009. When my husband and I, our late husband and I, bought the practice, it was really upsetting to me as it was my first experience in working with an animal hospital on what happened to pets, you know, after they passed away. And at that time, the only option if you didn't have burial at home was taking them to the landfill. And that, to me, just after we've spent so much time, and these are their family members, and, you know, we've known these since they were puppies, to me, it just didn't seem right. And so we sought out a cremation company, and we actually helped the local crematorium get started with Peaceful Pet, and they helped support our local animal rescue foundation. At this time, they are just not equipped to support the growing community or our practice and the, all the cremations that we do there. We've been using a company that's an hour and a half away, and again, to me, if something can be local and we can make it more personal with our clients that we've had for many years, then that's what, you know, we want to do. It's very close, one of the reasons we chose that location is it is very close to the animal hospital, and it is a central location for the people of Millersville. It has easy access, and everybody's familiar where Walmart is, so they, you know, could find it easily if they were had to, you know, if a pet passed away late at night or something like that, and they had to come and meet somebody. Like Mervyn was saying, there's no smoke or odor, a lot of times there's a lot of misconceptions about that. There is a smoke stack, I mean, there is a chimney, it is an incinerator, but it is digital. It has many chambers, it's 21,000 pounds, I mean, it's a, it's a, it's a, the same incinerator that they use for humans, just built a little bit differently for pets. It is built to follow all federal Clean Air Act guidelines, and at any time, if anything goes out of range based on percentages, it shuts down so that nothing, you know, can get by and cause any harm. I'm not sure, did you guys, do you guys have the attachment? There is a chart that shows the emissions, and it kind of compares them to a home fireplace, a school bus, and a fast food restaurant. And it just shows particulate matter or nitrogen and VOCs. But as you can see, the crematory is definitely well below these three examples. When you're doing cremation, it's mostly, it's, you know, the, a pet's body, the only thing that's really left over are the bones, it's mostly water. So those things are turned into carbon dioxide and water, so there's not like a lot of smoke or anything like that. But I think that is it, do you guys have any questions?
How about are you all gonna put this, up in that area? Is it closer up towards the apartments?
It is down the hill, it's in between where Baldwin Trophies used to be and Nathan Baugh has an AC, heating and air business there. We're next to them, beyond Bronson's. They've been great neighbors, they have good smoothies.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Edwards, for this time.
Thank you.
Is it anyone here that wishes to, you may have, is it anyone here that wished to speak in opposition All right, so there's no one here to speak in opposition, and there have been no questions or comments from the council?
I do have a question before we move further, and it's to Mervyn. Mervyn, so they didn't add any special zoning board, they didn't add in, they didn't have any special conditions or anything that we needed to consider?
Okay.
That's all.
All right, this concludes the presentation of evidence in this matter. Member of council, you have heard the ordinance and the evidence presented. Do I hear a motion on the amendment?
I make a motion that we accept the findings of the PNC Board and approve this request.
Second.
They're properly motioned second, is there any further discussion on the proposed amendment to the land development code? I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Ms. Schinholster?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
This concludes the public hearing. We have one more item under old business, and that is ordinance O-2110-16 to adopt the amendments to the budget for the year ending June 30, 2020, as a part of closing out our last year's general ledger. I'll ask the clerk to read the ordinance by caption.
An ordinance to amend the 2020, 2021 fiscal year annual operating budget.
This is the second reading, and we're ready to vote on the proposed ordinance. Is there a motion to adopt?
Move, we approve.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Ms. Schinholster?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Motion approved. We're ready to move to new business. We have four first readings tonight, and we will begin with asking the clerk to please read ordinance O-2111-17 by caption as a first read.
This is to conduct the first reading of an ordinance amending the charter to accept approximately 7.99 acres of land into the corporate limits of the city of Millersville with a zoning of CC Community Commercial. This property is located 2781 North Columbia Street, Ballin County Tax Mount, 0085 Parcel 50, and presently owned by Log Cabin Road 441 Investors LLC. This property will be placed in City Council District 6 and City County Voting Precinct 6.
At this time, I'll assign the ordinance to the Planning and Zoning Commission. I will ask the clerk to read ordinance O-2111-18 by caption as a first read.
This is to conduct the first reading of an ordinance amending the land development code to rezone property located at 111 Log Cabin Road from SFR 2 to CC. This property is currently owned by Log Cabin Road 441 Investors LLC. Applicant desires to sell property and combine this property with other properties for a proposed grocery store with other neighborhood shops.
This ordinance is also assigned to the Planning and Zoning Committee. I'll ask the clerk to read ordinance O-2111-19 by caption as a first read.
To conduct the first reading of an ordinance amending the land development code to rezone property located at 118 Turkey One Road from SFR 2 to CC. This property is currently owned by Log Cabin Road 441 Investors LLC. Applicant desires to sell property and combine this property with other properties for a proposed grocery store with other neighborhood shops.
This ordinance will also be assigned to the Planning and Zoning Commission. And I'll ask the clerk to read ordinance O-2111-20 by caption as a first read.
This is to conduct the first reading of an ordinance amended the land development code to rezone property located at 131 North Jefferson Street from CBC to MR 2. This property is currently owned by Frank Pendergast. Applicant desires to convert the property into six two-bedroom apartments and eight studio apartments for a total of 14 units.
This ordinance is assigned to Planning and Zoning Commission. I'll ask the clerk to read by caption Resolution R-2111-38, authorizing a loan from the city's revolving loan fund.
A resolution authorized the awarding of the city of Millersville's revolving loan fund to Miso Hungry LLC to offer the cost, to offset the cost of purchasing restaurant equipment and supplies.
You have heard the resolution, is there a motion to adopt?
So move.
Is there any discussion? I'll ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Ms. Schinholster?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Resolution is approved. I'll ask the clerk to read Resolution R-2111-39, authorizing COVID-related payroll supplements for employees by caption.
Resolution to establish premium pay for essential city of Millersville employees using funds received under the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, of 2021.
You have heard the resolution, is there a motion to adopt?
So move.
Second.
Is there any discussion? I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Ms. Schinholster?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Resolution is approved. We have two new alcohol license applications to consider tonight, and the renewals that are ready, and the renewals that are ready for a vote. We will begin with the new applications. I'll ask the clerk to present the alcohol license application for Shima? Shima?
Shima, looks like. And this is for Ivan Vladislav Manolio Love, Manolio Love. And it is the Manolio Love Group LLC doing business as Shima, located at 140 West Hancock Street, and this is for beer and wine consumption on premises.
You have heard the application, is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
Is there any discussion? I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Ms. Schinholster?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Application is approved. The second new application is for Columbia Pub. I'll ask the clerk to present the application.
This one's easy to read. Love Good Luster for Columbia Pub Incorporated doing business as Columbia Pub, located at 2485 North Columbia Street, Suite 105. And this is for beer and wine, liquor and Sunday sales consumption on premises.
You have heard the application, is there a motion to adopt?
So move.
Second.
All right, who, Chambers? And then Mr. Mullins? Is there any discussion? I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Ms. Schinholster?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
License is approved. And finally, I will ask the clerk to present the 2022 alcohol license renewals that have been vetted and are ready for approval.
Warren Hawkins American Legion, 430 West MLK Jr. for beer, liquor, consumption on premises. El Tequila Grill Incorporated, 168 Garrett Way for beer, wine, liquor, Sunday sales, consumption on premises. Georgia Wine and Spirits LLC, 201 Robertson Mill Road for beer and wine package to go. Boot and Rowdy Incorporated doing business as Buffington's, 120 West Hancock Street for beer, wine, liquor, Sunday sales and catering, consumption on premises. Aldi Incorporated doing business as Aldi 9, 1978 North Columbia Street for beer and wine package to go. AB Package LLC doing business as Milli Package, 917 North Columbia Street for beer, wine, liquor, package to go.
You have heard the applications, do I have a motion to adopt the renewals as presented?
So move.
Second.
Is there any discussion? The renewals are approved. Oh, sorry, I missed that.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Ms. Schinholster?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
All right, now, the renewals are approved. This concludes the items on the agenda, is there any further business to discuss this evening? All right, there being no further business to discuss, please keep the Jarrett family in your prayers again as they are once stricken with another death in their family, and everybody else that you know that I don't know. Thank you, Mr. Neese and Mr. Griffith, for pitch hitting for me all week long, and thank last week too, so thank y'all so very much. There being no further business to discuss, I do, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
All right, did you get that, Mr.? You stand adjourned.